...to find it in your heart to bless us with feelings of mutual respect for one another. At this time, Father, we also ask that you bless our servicemen overseas and their families. And also, Heavenly Father, we ask that take everyone in this courtroom today and all the members of this court that we will make decisions that's based on logic and not emotion. In God's name we pray. Thank you.
[inaudible]
Here.
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 Karen Ashford.
Here.
Jim Willis.
Here.
Ray.
Here.
Ray Cannon.
Present.
And Memphis.
Here.
On behalf.
Here.
Next item on the agenda is the bringing approval of the minutes. Any questions concerning the minutes?
We have four of the minutes.
Uh, what about here? Mr. Russell's packet. See if there's a name right there, Mr. Russell.
So we're all emailed.
Email, we printed off. [inaudible] Also, I'm afraid we have passed out some rule of order. This is a guide for portions of Robert's rule of order. Quite a few times we've been through the meeting. Went to a class about an hour concerning this. That should be a part of the package. We need to post final minutes and the next item. Any comments here? Nobody get no copies of the minutes?
I got the email.
Okay, I'm just asking.
She's going to print off more copies so you didn't get them.
I'm trying to move that to the end. We'll come back and do the proof of minutes later. We're now at the public comment period. We have 15 minutes left. Anything they need to do, so I'll leave that up to the room. The rest of the public here is just in the meeting. Anyone over here? Anybody know? This one?
Thank you for doing the title, sir.
So you can say. All right. And I'll move beyond the public comment period to approve notice. Any questions concerning notice?
We have one to read, Sammy Shaw.
Play. Four down, four correct. Play the motion. Greg Mitchell, second. Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All vote. Okay. Next thing on the agenda as we move up. We have Mr. Donahue here to discuss the contract. Now, if you want to just brief, you can turn around. Switch to one computer.
This works 10 minutes ago, doesn't mean it's going to work now.
It works now.
There we go. Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, everybody. I think the mayor has spoken briefly about me a few times prior to my arrival here. Let me tell you a little bit about myself and then we'll go into what my company does. My name is Donahue and I'm the owner of the Bear Group. Prior to getting the Bear Group, I served 10 years as a General Assembly member representing Portion's brother for county. There we go. And in addition to my legislative experience, where I'm focused on fiscal review and bill review in the General Assembly for 10 years, I served in the private sector with manufacturing and healthcare companies, starting my own business of the Bear Group after my retirement from the General Assembly. What I want to talk to you about today is the revenue streams that Cannon County currently has and whether or not they're leaking or you're missing something. So I'm going to go through some things to cover all bases and then we'll just hop clean about how it's at. What I'm going to do is I'm going to... The review that I come in and conduct with accounting covers most of your revenue sources, basically your state shared revenue sources. Those are going to be things like your current sales tax, haul income tax, mixed rate if it exists, if it's applicable to accounting. And then we'll also look at some potential local and state opportunities and potential recovery of past collections that didn't quite, again, that were leaking or you didn't quite get all that you were supposed to have gotten in past collections. I'm going to talk about the SITIS-based taxes and explain why those are important to accounting. I will show you the revenue streams that we typically will look at and explain why they're missing. And any of the revenue streams I talk about in here, where I'm going to show some recoveries we've had for other counties, may not necessarily apply to Cannon County and the results may not... I'm not guaranteeing those results, I'm just going to show you some examples of what actually have worked in the past. SITIS-based taxes, SITIS is Latin for position or site, so that means actually where a sale took place, the physical location for it. So when we talk about SITIS taxes, that means those that take place here in the county at a retail store or something along those lines. In Tennessee, a lot of your local option sales tax, we call them local option, most of you just call them sales tax, it's that percentage of the 9.75% that stays locally. And your haul income tax are taxes that are based on where they are collected or where the item is sold, things along that line. And as you know, taxes go to the local government where the point of sale or purchase physically takes place. So that's our critical basis for looking at these taxes because they physically take place here in Cannon County. And just for those in attendance, your county commissioner already knows this, in counties that don't have city or special school districts, the county gets 50% of that local option sales tax with the other 50% going to the county school system. If there's a city school system, everything changes. Cannon County does not... Rephrase that. Woodbury does not have a city school system, so that makes it much easier to review the things we have here. You have no interlocal agreements with the city, they don't have a school system that they are funding, even if one of your schools are located in the city limits. The way this is hopping around until some kid put this together for me, I did, I wouldn't have things popping all over the screen. Your haul income tax is another individual tax that is SITIS-based or locally based. It's state income tax on the interest and dividend from taxpayer investments. And that tax is phasing out, it's planned to be expired in 2021. So that's a revenue source you currently have, however, the amount coming in each year is continuing to dwindle down. You do have it as something that you'll have till 2021. After then, that source of revenue disappears for all counties, not just Cannon County. Three-eighths of that tax collected is to remain with county government. Now, for Cannon County, this is a list of the current state shared revenue sources that you have. These will be some of the things that I'm looking into to see where things are leaking or missing or just didn't get fully collected in the past. And by not collecting it fully in the past, that means we have a correction going forward as well because it'll be additional revenue to do to the county. Let me explain how these taxes are collected. Your business owner or their tax preparer, their accountant, their bookkeeper applies for their sales and use tax certification. They get registered with the state. From time to time, that is incorrectly indicated on the form where that business is located or where the money should go. That's simply an administrative error that takes place that nobody really corrects. The Department of Revenue takes the information at face value, they don't go back and double check, so it gets entered into the automatic system. And from there, everything is automatically taken care of each month with no verification of the information that's in the system. Taxpayer begins remitting their sales tax online, the Department of Revenue takes the information that's in there and sends it out where they put in the system it needs to go. Now, one thing I want to point out, the mistake, it doesn't cause a difference in the taxes owed by the taxpayer. They're unaware of the problem and even when the problem is corrected, they're unaware of the problem. They pay their taxes, that's all they care about knowing, that's all the Department of Revenue requires of them. What we're looking at is making sure that once they send that in, it goes to where it's supposed to go. What the Bear Group is promising and provides is a complete follow-through process. I am not the only company providing this service. I am the only one that does it thoroughly. There's only one other company in Tennessee that does provide this. They come in, they find the errors and they let you go through, correct them and making sure everything gets processed. I research the collection of your taxes, I will prepare the reports that are necessary. Everything I do will be through the mayor's office and with his knowledge and conjunction. That's the way it has to be, he has to be aware of it, approve it and know what I am causing to have happen. I will send the changes to the Department of Revenue or to the correct State Department with all the backup documentation that's needed for the changes, why they're wrong and where it needs to go. And then I follow up and stay on that until the money is actually collected and deposited back into the Cannon County proper account. I do want to point out that as a result of this review, it will cause no action on any of your taxpayers, any of your public's actions unless they're not paying their taxes. Then we find that, we report that, that's going to be something that they ultimately step up and start doing. But 90% of what is discovered in most of the revenue review columns, your taxpayer has no idea that there's going to change, the department corrects it internally in their records, they make the change for the county and everything automatically starts processing properly from that point going forward. No other action is needed on behalf of the taxpayer or on the county. Once we correct it once, it's corrected for the duration of the time. One of the reasons, the main reason most companies or most counties outsource, I'm going to go in and in the course of 90 days, this process will take about 90 days from the time I start my review till the time the state finally approves everything, we go through the double check process that has to take place. The manpower that I want to put into this is not a... It's something you don't want to put on your bookkeepers or your finance department. They are covered up with the day-to-day activities are going on and putting out the fires that come with running the county on a day-to-day basis. I'll go in and I'll be dedicated to this project immediately solely until completed. It will require no additional staff on your part, no overtime of your individuals, we'll just handle it all for you. I have over 20-year history of proven cost savings, I'll show you some of those results in a moment. And, you know, some folks go, "Why can't, why doesn't anybody else find this?" Most of your accounting or bookkeeping folks make sure A plus B equals C. I look down to see what's supposed to be in A and what's supposed to be in B to make sure they're there so that you get everything that's supposed to be there. So I'm not just looking at the financials, I'm looking at what's not there and go out and find it and bring it to the table. So these are some of the past results I've had based on county population. I don't typically share the counties publicly that I've worked with or am currently working with, I will share that with your mayor if he wants to contact those mayors individually. They all have given good references for it, I just don't make that in public, just as I would keep your information private going past this. As you'll see, my results aren't guaranteed. We had one county population, 10,000 individuals was the county population, I found $40. We never know till we get in there and start looking. Cannon County is going to be between the 10,000 and 16,000. You guys at 2015 were 13,800, so we're looking at about 14,000 population for the county. So you're going to fall somewhere in between that 10,000 and this next one. We had two counties that were at 16,000 in population, one county, I want to review two of their tax sources, I still have four more to go for sure, maybe more when we get through, and $10,500 has been found for them, that is reoccurring dollars. Another county with 16,000, we're up to reviewing four of their tax sources and $102,500 have been recovered for them, about 75% of that is reoccurring dollars. Some of it's one-time monies or only a portion of the monies becomes reoccurring. But about 75% of theirs, of that $100,000 for them is reoccurring. And then we have a county at 19,000 population, reviewing only two sources for those, $72,000 is reoccurring. And by reoccurring, I mean it is, we were able to recover that in the current year that I reviewed and then it will be new monies to be counted in every future budget going forward. And these are taxes that as your economy grows, they will increase as well. So it's 72,000 plus whatever annual increase you see in the economy for your businesses in the area. The 2,000 and 19,000, we are still reviewing other tax sources for those and I expect to see additional revenue come in for those. Some of those won't be reoccurring, they could be one-time expenditures and if you have a special project going on, you've got an influx of some monies for a one-time project. This is some of the work I've done on private sector areas, not only do I do work for counties, I go out into manufacturing businesses, healthcare businesses, personal care services, and these are some of the savings I have found for the larger companies. $9.5 million in savings, $500,000 towards a volume of 84% reduction in monthly costs for a personal care service and a manufacturing business will reduce their annual costs in two departments by 25%. So those are going in, just reviewing contracts and seeing, again, these are things that you enter into a contract or you have a process going along and everybody just follows along and continues to do the daily business. Every now and then, a third set of eyes comes in handy to look back and go, "Are we where we're supposed to be with where we started things with contracts 10 years ago or revenue from a company 20 years ago?" So that's where I come in and just take that time and put the third set of eyes on it to see what may be missing. With that, I'm going to open up for some questions. As I know I haven't covered everything, this is a quick review, but I stand for questions from the committee.
How often do you review this?
It's typically a one-time review, it's once we correct it, it's corrected. We could come back in five years and do another review, you're going to have very few new businesses that have come about during that time. So you're not, wouldn't find much, you may find the $40 or less than $1,000 or something along that line. But once these are corrected, they pretty well stay corrected.
Can you re... Can you say again about the cost of five years' reimbursement?
My reimbursement is based on two things. When I do these reviews in each category, I will either be able to go back and reclaim money, meaning we found a... In some cases, we can go back to the prior year and say, "Okay, you weren't collecting monies from these five companies." That's what I call clawback. So that'll be, that will be the first discovery we have. So you'll have that clawback, let's say we go to one company or we go through this and I find five companies that everything's allocated wrong, we get it put back to Cannon County. Let's say we found $20,000 there. That'll be $20,000 for this current year that you have a budget for, but it will be $20,000 going forward every year for future years. My fee is based on that first recovery, so that clawback, that first 12 months that we can go back, or the first 12 months if we find out that, okay, there was nothing to collect but you should have been, this is a new tax for lack of that word, I don't want the public thinking, "Oh, we're talking new taxes, we're just talking something that was missed, we can't go back and collect." So either the clawback or the first 12 months, my fee is based on that only, nothing else reoccurring, so I'll clarify that out. My fee is 50% of my fine, at that one time, either what we could go back and claim or 12 months going forward of what we introduced.
So how often do you go back just 12 months and can't be two years back?
That's a good question. Typically, that's the case. We have discovered, depending on the tax, depending on how the statute is written, we actually have found some that we've gone back to 2014 and depending on a court case that's currently pending before the Supreme Court, it may be able to go back to implementation of that particular tax. In that case, in some counties, it's going to go back to 1980. I haven't found that in Cannon County. For my quick review of everything that I pulled, we're looking at just a 12-month clawback, being able to review and then pull that forward. So you're going to have a mixture of some of those and potentially some going forward for 12 months. But again, everything that I'm looking at, 90% of what I find is going to be a reoccurring revenue source for you.
Playing devil's advocate, oh, I'm sorry.
So if you found that somebody just wasn't paying their taxes for such a business or something, you can only go back that one year, you won't go back further?
Correct.
Playing devil's advocate, if you see a pattern of, say, an office, if you see a pattern of the way the paperwork is going, then would you go back?
I'm not sure I understand that, but before we get off of that, let me go back to clarify this. If somebody hasn't been paying, if the state comes in and goes back and does an audit, that's one thing. If they would force them to pay, that would be a recovery. Chances are that's not going to be the case because how do you go back and then correct things? That would just be on the new coming in 12-month going forward, one-year thing. Sorry. Okay, let's see if I can get a better understanding of what you're asking.
Okay, you know, we're talking, now, you say you see a source or you see something that's not collected or you see something that is kind of out of kilter as far as it's been. If you see a pattern of this has been going on, would you go back further than a year?
It depends on how far the state allows us to go back. A lot of it is set up by statute or regulation, so that's why I say, maybe I can, maybe I can, it's going to depend on the situation. The one that we could go back four years was mixed rate tax, we'd go back to 2014, potentially back further, that would apply to this county. At least it's not listed on the quick review that I did. I will confirm the revenue sources with the mayor's office and other county departments. But the law and regulations determine like how far back I can go on something. How far back the county goes, I'm actually representing the county when I do this and then they give them the permission. Both of the codes are here.
Well, if it's certain sign of a fee, if it's a limited recovery, you get the fee immediately to 50% correct?
The monies are due when you get the monies. Normally, what will happen, the first revenue I looked at, it takes me about 90 days between my work and the state's work. The state will, I send in the corrections, the state verifies that I'm correcting it and then they will notify the county, okay, end of November, I'm just picking a date, that money will transfer into your account, November is when I bill. So you guys will see the money and know that you've received it when I send my bill.
Okay, so therefore, applying the common sense rule and too good to be true rule, there's absolutely no cost to the county if you do not recover the same, correct?
That's correct.
Why does your contract read that this automatic extended, unless its notification is given through a 60-day expiration contract if you do not do any type of follow-up until maybe post the 5-year gap?
We are dependent upon the state for some of the databases and information that is reviewed and I cannot, we could be an available project and so the point is to allow for that extension. The contract is countable by written notice for either party at any time.
Well, within 60 days.
Within 60 days, yes. The automatic renewal, some of the other counties requested that, so we've just made it part of the process. If there's some minor changes you want to that, we can adjust that accordingly. But if we're in the middle of the project, it just makes sense to go ahead and review it. Or in some cases, if it's something new and we're supposed to be reviewing those 12 months, waiting to the end of those 12 months and see what the revenue collection was, that could go, we could be six months into, that could be discovered six months into the contract, which means I need to wait 12 months to review it, so that's going to put us at 18 months for the contract, that's a 12-month contract.
Have you had any, it would seem, based on your presentation so far, that all the counties have been lined up to get your board or someone with your same paths to do this service for them? Have you had an accountant turn you down at your presentation?
Not yet. And there have been counties I haven't found anything for as I point, or not enough to make it worth the long drive I made to there and the hours I put into it, but that's a risk I'm willing to take because I know that I can help the counties, there's some things I can find for you.
And so what you're saying actually is you do these findings and discoveries, but actually the state verifies your work to say that is correct and therefore the monies are due or being taken or paid.
They have to verify it because it's their database that has to be changed. They're not going to simply take my word for it. And I can tell you that of all the findings I have sent up, there was one I was incorrect on. Most times, we send up anywhere from 25 to 50 corrections per report and in one that I sent up 25 revenue sources, they sent one I was incorrect on and it was, it was simply a toss of the coin as to whether it was accurate or not based on location.
I got a question.
Oh, sorry, he was next, I forgot.
I noticed at the end of your agreement here, it says if there is a legal dispute that we must travel to Benton County.
That was a typo in the contract.
This is a typo?
Yes, that county hits, I don't tip, can't house my counties, obviously.
That's fine, you don't have to deal with.
That specific county asks for their county to be the source. Typically, it's Rutherford County, we're all in the same senate district, so Rutherford County is typically where I have those taking place, although we've never had that option come up.
And one more question, and could not the county request the Tennessee State Department of Revenue to verify the same information?
No, sir. They're not reviewing it, they're confirming my findings.
Yes, ma'am, I understand that, that's why I asked the question that I asked.
There is nobody with the sources that the state provides, the CTA, the Department of Revenue or any of those that perform these types of reviews. It's left to the county to ensure that the information is provided properly.
But it's for my court. Have you read this?
I have not.
Have any of your findings required legal action?
No, I have spoken to some legal counsel in those findings. We were talking about the ones going back multiple years, when we go back multiple years, the first time we did it, it was a legal counsel that said, "Wait a minute, what are you talking about?" So the mayor sent it to legal counsel and I provided the documentation showing the statute, what gave the authority for it, and things along that line. So that's been the only time we've had to discuss it with legal counsel was to provide the information because the mayor's office was unfamiliar with it, the staff was unfamiliar with it. But we've never had legal challenge to anything, any of our findings are the result of it. Uh, that specific county asks for their county to be in source. Uh, typically, it's Rutherford County, we're all in the same senate district, so Rutherford County is typically where I have those, um, taking place, although we've never had that option come up.
And one more question, and could not the county request the Tennessee State Department of Revenue to verify the same information?
No, sir. They're not reviewing it, they're confirming my findings.
Yes, ma'am, I understand that, that's why I asked the question that I asked.
There is nobody with the sources that, uh, the state provides, I mean, CTAS, the Department of Revenue, or any of those that perform these types of reviews, uh, that's left to the county to ensure that the information is provided properly. Yes.
What is for my court? Have you read this?
I have not. Have any of your findings required legal action?
No, I have spoken to some legal counsel in those findings, we, we were talking about the ones going, going back multiple years, uh, when we go back multiple years, the first time we did it, it was legal counsel that said, wait a minute, what are you talking about? So, the, the mayor sent it to legal counsel, um, and I provided the documentation showing the statute, uh, what gave the authority for it, and things along that line. So, that's been the only time we've had to discuss it with legal counsel, was to provide the information, because the mayor's office was unfamiliar with it, the staff was unfamiliar with it, uh, but we've never had legal, uh, challenge to anything, any of our findings or the results of it.
Can I make a motion, we accept these?
Executive?
I'd like to, uh, before we do this, I'd like to, uh, before we make the motion to accept it.
Donna, question very much, I think that's all with you.
I mean, I'm, I'm willing to say that I, I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, gentlemen, ladies.
Contingent of both is for, if that makes sense.
So, I have a motion to type for, um, review of the, of the. Yeah.
Are you, how soon can you get that, you're gonna see him the different version, is that correct?
Actually, I'll step out, I'll might show up when the new version is, if I have email access here, I can, um, I can email it to me immediately.
Okay, in the session.
They will legally view, it's a legal order.
All right, uh, next one to the committee, thank you, so pleasure. Mayor Andy Dugan has a, uh, proposal for a committee.